Eileen, it looks like we have the gang, so can you read the opening statement, please?
Sure. Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, August 8th, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice hasn't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 14th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video. You will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you can use *9 to raise or lower your hand and *6 to mute or unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. May we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Mr. Orozco has been excused. Mr. Stanton, maybe late. Mr. Rebel?
Here.
Chairman Sayah?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen is excused. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Andy, can we have a swearing-in of the zoning board professionals, please?
Yes, everyone please raise your right hand. Sherry, you're muted, just so you know. Do you swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you go?
I do.
The professionals are sworn in, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Eileen, item number five, approval of minutes. Are there any minutes?
There's no minutes this evening.
Got it. Item six, vouchers. Any vouchers?
I have no vouchers this evening.
Item seven, correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
I don't really have any correspondence. Just a reminder that if you didn't already change your password, I believe Eileen informed you the last time that IT has asked us to make 10-digit passwords. They need to have a capital letter, small letter, a numeral, and an alternate character. But if you haven't done so, please do so as soon as possible. If you need the instructions, I can resend them out to you. And that's it.
Okay, Eileen, let's, I think this is a good time right now to, let's talk about, you know, correspondence for us going live back at Town Hall in October. What do you think?
Well, it's funny because the township manager and the head of community development asked me today what the possibilities were, and right now, there's nothing scheduled for October for either board. So it would be a perfect time, which gives us time to advertise that we're going back in person, and it gives any applicants who get scheduled the opportunity to do their notice correctly. So...
Okay, great. So, Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
You're good with that?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Mertens?
Good.
Mr. Moretti?
Good.
Mr. Hughes?
Absolutely.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes, I'm good.
Excellent.
Thank you. I think you're frozen, Paul.
This is ironic, we're discussing going in person and now our chairman is frozen.
So, you know, the Zoom gods, the Zoom gods are intervening.
Zoom is mad.
Paul, you might have to log out and log back in. I don't know. In the meantime, if Todd Cohen is in the audience, I don't see him signed on. If you're with anyone else, could you please raise your hand and I'll bring you into the meeting?
Hi, this is Jim. Yeah, I'm in my own home, not with Todd, but I know I had problems logging on. It required me to reload.
There, I see him. He's waving. He's in. And we have Paul now, but Paul, you're muted.
All right, so, so, so let's talk about this real quick. It looks like, you know, with all the upgrades that are going on in town, you know, there we're connected, not connected, connected, not connected, you know, whether it's the WAN, the DNS, the DHCP server, and it's just causing all sorts of problems. So I hope in the evening hours that, you know, they're finished with their work. They stabilize the network so that we can get through this. Otherwise, I got a phone that I'll jump onto the hotspot if it happens to...
Okay.
Okay, so resolutions. Are there any resolutions?
I have no resolutions.
All right, then we're down to applications before the board. So first up is case number BA 22-04, Sina Holdings. This is a used variance and preliminary and final major site plan. Description: Application of Sina Holdings LLC as applicant and owner seeking used variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval to demolish an existing 3,672-square-foot, one-story frame commercial building and construct a 5,048-square-foot, one-story butler-type commercial building with associated gravel, concrete, and asphalt driveways and a stormwater management plan. They are proposing 30 gravel parking spaces, an 80-foot gravel loading area, and a refuge enclosure immediately abutting the 12,373-square-foot, one-story commercial frame building that is to that is to remain. A 352-square-foot, two-story additional to the existing single-family dwelling is also proposed on premises known as Block 49, Lot 36.02, 342 Squawton Yellow Brick Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard on July 11th, when it was carried to August 8th. Current expiration date is September 24th, 2022.
And Mr. Cohen, just so you're aware, there are only six members right now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals. You did mention before that the other member might be on his way. Is that possible, or you don't know?
He had an appointment, and if he gets out early enough, he will be here.
I think we're prepared to go with six this evening. That would be fun. Mr. Chairman, if I might, I have a brief introduction to give the board a better feel for the application. I also have three witnesses that I'll introduce after the introduction. I guess we'll have them sworn to her with me in my office, my engineer, and my applicant, and Mr. Higgins, as you know, is online. With that being said, I just want to give you a brief intro. So while this application appears extensive, if you look at the review letters, in reality, it's a pretty simple, straightforward application. But because it involves a pre-existing, non-conforming mixed-use property, it automatically triggers a bunch of waivers and variants. The only things that are proposed to change with this application are the replacement of a dilapidated commercial building in the front of the property with a new building that will in fact meet your architectural design standards and a small addition to the existing residential use in the rear of the property, but no additional bedrooms are being proposed. Since the early '70s, this property has pretty much operated the way it exists today. The main building has been occupied by tenants in the material handling and equipment repair business, with the largest tenant being National Fitting Corp., who also operated out of the smaller commercial building in the front of the site. In 1998, the owner of National Fitting received a minor subdivision and site plan approval to subdivide the property so he can construct a single-family residence next door for his own use and continue the mixed-use operation on-site on the eight acres that remain. My client purchased the property in 2019. National Fitting downsized. My client's business ECS, similar to that, moved into the large commercial building, applied for and received CCOs for all tenants, and since then has made major improvements to the property and is now seeking approvals to replace the smaller commercial building that is basically falling down with a newer building, and will also only use half of that as the machine shop, so it will actually be a small decrease in the amount of commercial space being used on-site. With that being said, as a brief introduction, I do have, same with me, like I said, Mr. DeFalco, our engineer, Mr. Senna, the applicant, and Mr. Higgins, our planner.
Oh, Todd, I just wanted to interrupt. You made a comment that you comply with the architecture. You don't.
Well, I said we're going to. I know the thing, the applicant, what we submitted probably did not, but we're going to testify by the applicant later that he will address those and submit something that does in fact comply.
So is your architect here?
No.
So who's going to testify that the architect is going to comply? Not an architect?
The applicant's going to testify. He hasn't engaged an architect at this point. It's not an extremely fancy building. It's basically a butler building.
I understand what the building is, but like, we require architectural compliance and, you know, I'm just gonna put it out there that that's not generally what we accept. So you can move forward, but at the end of the day, I'm not 100% convinced that your client is going to be enough in terms of testimony.
Okay. Can we mute for a minute?
Okay.
Have one second, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you. Eileen, I'm on my hotspot. I mean, that's the only way. I thought I was...
We didn't get very far, did we?
Working well, Paul.
Yeah, the AT&amp;T hotspot works well. Better, sometimes better than the franchisee that has the the service agreement with us. It's painful. Jen?
Yeah.
This is the old pipe fittings shop, isn't it?
I, yes.
You know, the one that used to work very closely with frequency engineering and all the stuff, going in industrial base over there? That's, yep, that's kind of what I'm thinking. Yep.
Yep. I just, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, this is not anything that wasn't in our letter, and I'm not saying that they're what they're proposing is not going to be acceptable, but, you know, I mean, we're, I'm not, I'm trying to be consistent with what we require of every applicant.
Got it. Yeah, the one...
You're breaking up. I can't hear you.
I said, I think that was the white, the white store, the one-story white build, kind of like...
Yeah, it's like a long grayish, white.
A long one, yeah.
Exactly.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Based on Jen's comments and the fact that we only have six members and might be a good idea to submit those architecturals, we're going to request the German to your next meeting. Give us time to do that.
Mr. Cohen, you're across from the high school. You're across from the golf course. You're across from a lot. It's a high-visibility area. So, you know, having nice architecturals will probably go a long way in this case.
I agree, Mr. Chairman. Maybe we can come live, too.
Eileen?
Our next hearing has a site plan for Home Sweet Home and assigned variance for Route 70 properties, which really shouldn't be that long, I don't think, for either one. So if you want August 22nd, that would be fine.
I've already got a commitment in Farmingdale, though.
Okay, then the next one after that would be September 12th.
And we have to have that in 10 days before, huh?
Yes.
That should be enough. So I therefore request the extension without further notice to September 12th.
And that will still be Zoom.
It looks like the expiration date's September 24th, so that works also. As of now.
We're good, Andy?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so for anyone that's here for application in the public, BA 22-04, Sina Holdings, this application is being carried without further notice to September 12th meeting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Are we ready for the next application?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right, on the docket, case number BA 21-21, Countryside North American Partners LP. It's a used variance and preliminary and final major site plan. Application of Countryside North American Partners LP as applicant and Countryside North America Partners, Lot 42, 1200 West Farms Road LLC, Lot 43, and 1204 West Farms Road LLC, Lot 44, as owner seeking used variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct five garden apartment buildings totaling 56,000 square feet and containing 56 apartments. One of the apartment buildings will also contain a clubhouse on the ground floor. The subject property, Lot 42, was previously before the planning board in 1989 and was granted site plan approval to construct a 15-building apartment complex consisting of 180 Mount Laurel rental units with associated improvements. The site was, will continue to be accessed via the existing 40-foot-wide two-way driveway, North American Drive, to West Farms Road. North American Drive also provides access to 15 existing garden apartment buildings in the existing Countryside Place Development. Additional proposed improvements include a pool, playground, various drive aisles, parking, site utilities, and one above-ground infiltration basin with a retaining wall and two underground stormwater management basins on premises known as Block 138, Lots 42, 43, and 44, 1200 and 1204 West Farms Road, and North American Drive. This application was originally scheduled to be heard on 13 June 2022, when it was rescheduled with further notice. With notice. Okay.
We have Mr. Junko, who's the attorney, and once again, Mr. Junko, we only have six members, just so you're aware.
Thank you, Eileen and Mr. Chairman. We understand that. We recognize that a used variance requires five affirmative votes. I do not have a court reporter with me today, so we'll rely on the transcript that would come from the Zoom meeting. In any event, you accurately described our client's application. The project is properly located, identified. It does request relief. Used variance is identified because in one of the zones that this property is in are not permitted as the MHP zone. Okay, second, there's some requested waivers for buffers and screening. However, I believe these issues have been addressed in the latest plan. Basically, we were looking to provide the requested emergency access driveway from West Farms to the site, and that was not a permitted improvement within the 50-foot buffer. It was, however, requested by the fire official, and we did provide it, and he is in agreement with that plan, as I understand his last letter. There's also a sidewalk connecting this property to the existing sidewalk system on the street, on the West Farm Road, in the rest, near West Farms Road right away. We're also requesting some relief with regard to buffers and screening. There's a four-season buffer that is provided, six feet high, required 50 feet area. We have a couple of alternatives that we want to propose, and we also request, will request the board, the authorizer, will go through the tax assessor, and so identify to consolidate the lots into one lot and block. And with regard to the driveways and parking aisles, which we are, the ordinance requires 30 feet. The residential site improvement standard is 25 feet, and our application complies with the residential site improvement standards. So that's what we're looking to do. So for this evening, I have several witnesses. First will be Ted Osborne, a registered architect. We'll talk about the design and the architectural plant renderings that have been delivered. Second would be Robert Espaza, our civil engineer, John Ray, our traffic consultant, Christine Cuffon, the professional planner. So, Mr. Chairman, if you approve and with your permission, I'd ask that Mr. Osborne be sworn. I'll ask him to present his credentials to the board and accept him as an expert in his field.
Mr. Chair, can I just interject? I do think that there are some issues that are still outstanding with respect to potential prorata share for the light at Fort Plains and West Farms Road, as well as perspective set aside associated with the affordable housing. I know that we have been back and forth with the applicant and had encouraged them to bring these items to a conclusion prior to coming before you. It's up to you if you want to move forward without conclusion on these items, but I'm here to tell you that when you ask me my opinion absent some kind of conclusion on these issues, I'm not going to be able to give you any direction. So it's up to you whether you want to proceed, but these are items that I feel like need to be addressed. The applicant is well aware that they should have been addressed, and I feel like they should have addressed them prior to coming to you, but they chose to come anyway, so it's up to you whether you want to proceed or not.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we do want to proceed. With regard to the prorata traffic impact fee assessment that wants to be charged, that is part of our traffic engineer's report. He has conducted a study, and he's prepared to address the appropriate criteria as it relates to that intersection, his current operational conditions, and the impacts both in the build and no build condition from our site to that. So I think that would address part of that issue. The second aspect has to do with affordable housing. And in that regard, earlier this, in a few months ago, I attended a meeting on behalf of our clients with the attorney for the affordable housing provisions in Howell and the township administrator. And six or so weeks later, we did get some response. However, that was really only formalized and presented to us earlier today. We're certainly willing to proceed and discuss those things further, but for the moment, I don't think that that is a issue that we would discuss before the board in terms of...
I mean, respectively, John, it is. This is a used variance. And so these items, I think, need to be worked out before the board gets put in a position of having to make a decision. And honestly, we told you that today multiple times. So you guys want to move forward, that's fine, but I'm going to say to the board, I would be remiss if I advise you to actually act on this application. I think that these things need to be worked out before we can determine the balancing act of the positive versus the negative. We know that this issue of the traffic in this area is a problem, and what the issue with the traffic late is going to be is up in the air, and that has been issue for multiple applications prior to this one. And quite honestly, you know, we've asked for some concessions regarding the affordable housing on the site. They have not been cooperative. And so until we get the affordable housing issue resolved, I mean, honestly, I'm not 100% sure. Mr. Chair, it's up to you, but I think these issues need to be resolved prior to the board even moving forward with the application.
Thank you, Jen. Mr. Bear? Is there a township position on something like this?
Well, it hasn't been, I mean, ultimately, the township may take a position before the board in that regard. They haven't... As I've been told, there were conversations on affordable housing issues. I was under the understanding that that was part of the, putting aside what the township had said, that what, that there were issues before the, that that was something that was going to be presented by Mr. Junko to the board as to what the proposal was, but from the applicant's standpoint. But I understand Jennifer's point. It's not resolved. That's true.
Well, then, we couldn't vote on it either way.
Well.
We don't have all the, we don't have all the details.
I mean, my recommendation would be these things worked out before you guys even get involved, but that's just my professional opinion.
Got it. Charlie? What's it looking like from your perspective?
You know, I think, like Jen alluded to, there's been a number of applications, you know, before the planning and zoning board in this vicinity where traffic has been a concern. I think it's been in my review letter since the first iteration of the letter that, you know, traffic was going to be an item of discussion and that, you know... you know, the traffic data that was presented in the report used the 10th edition of the IT where a new addition has come out. You know, I think there's also some questions regarding the prior approvals on the property and certain requirements that were made of that applicant at the time in regards to various intersection improvements throughout the municipality and whether those were ever, you know, perfected. And then how that plays into this application and, you know, the addition to what they're adding to the existing site. So so it's, the current application is only for five garden apartments, but it's being consolidated with the existing development that's there. So, you know, we're looking at the site as the whole and the traffic that's generated for the site of the whole and how how that impacts, you know, the area and certainly the intersection of West Farm and Fort Plains.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Junko? You know, if you would like to have your professionals sworn in and start putting testimony on the record, that is fine. But, you know, we, we adhere to our professionals very, very closely when it comes to their advice and recommendations and counsel, you know. So if if they're not, you know, satisfied that the elements are all being met in front of us, it makes it difficult for the board members to to act upon.
Well, I understand that, but regardless of those two issues, it's still, the architecture is going to be the architecture, the site design is proposed as the site design. The traffic impacts, I think, when the, when those traffics or information is presented, that's just a typical testimony. With regard to the affordable housing issues, that will become a planner's issue, and the planners can discuss it. The integration of a prior site into the current allocation, I need, you know, I first learned of that today. I think that's some significant issue that requires more research by me, for sure. So I would agree that.
I mean, I would, I would.
Excuse me, Jen, I didn't mean to cut you off.
The traffic is not the traffic. The traffic goes into the the impact of the intersection. So, no, it's not the traffic is the traffic. So, I mean, honestly, we can go through the engineering if you want to. But at the end of the day, I'm not 100% sure that the engineering is going to be what the engineering is after we address the traffic implications and the other affordable housing implications, which are significant and have been very clearly advised to the applicant multiple times. So, I mean, you guys can move forward, but I'm here to tell you that I don't think we should move forward with traffic. I don't think we should move forward with planning. And I, you know, at the end of the day, the board's not going to be in a position to act. So you guys want to keep moving forward? That's up to you. I would strongly recommend against it, but that's up to you.
Mr. Junko? Who's, who's the first one up that you have that needs to be sworn in by Mr. Bear?
Ted Osborne.
Mr. Bear?
Yes, Mr. Osborne, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
My name is Harry Theodore, which is why I go by T, Osborne, O S B O R N E.
Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn.
Thank you, Mr. Bear.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to offer Mr. Osborne as an expert in the field of architecture. I'm going to ask you to present his credentials and what can consider to accept him. Ted, would you please?
Sure. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I'm also licensed in 14 other states. I work for PSNS Architects and Engineers. I have been an architect in New Jersey since 1987.
Have you designed other, been involved in the design and development of multifamily housing in other locations?
Yes, we have.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer that Mr. Osborne has credent, trust credentials, is properly licensed, and has demonstrated experience with this type of development.
He's an architect, not an engineer, right?
Correct. I am an architect.
The one thing I'm missing, sir, is what university or college?
Miami University undergraduate, Miami University, Miami University for my masters and Columbia for a study in urban design.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you.
As an architect, correct?
As an architect, yes.
As an architect.
All right. So Ted, could you just basically describe to the board what the five buildings that are to be built on this site will consist of in terms of material, design, colors, and basically appearance and operation?
Do they have the PowerPoint presentation, or we just want to just go with it? So you're familiar with the site, you're familiar with the buildings that are out there? These buildings have been designed to match and coordinate with those buildings with a few exceptions. One of them is, it's going to all be air-conditioned, so we no longer will have window air conditioning.
Mr. Osborne, I was going to ask, can we get that put up on the screen?
Yeah.
Charlie, is it you or Eileen or?
I'm sorry, I'm home. I don't have access, so.
So what exhibit are they looking to share?
They have to let, make me a presenter.
Can we make, make, make me a presenter?
GHC IT department.
We'd like to share.
What is it?
GHC IT department.
GHC I C, IT department, and the presenter?
Sure.
Start with, start with this.
Which one did it on this list?
I don't think so. It's sheet eight, too, but that's on a PowerPoint presentation. Is there a PowerPoint presentation?
Should be A8.
There you go. So go down to number eight.
Can we go full screen on that?
Yeah, one more, please.
Ted, were these plans prepared by you or others under your direction for presentation to this board?
Yes, they were.
Okay, could you describe the plans to the board?
So on the left of this plan, you'll see the site plan, and you see four As. Those are the four apartment units. And then Building B is the combination of apartment and clubhouse building. If the top perspective is the front of the clubhouse building, which I'll go into in more detail a little later on, and the bottom perspective is the residential building. Buildings, can we go to the next slide, please? Just to understand the makeup of the new residential buildings, there are four buildings, a total 12 units, 48 units, six one-bedroom, four two-bedrooms, two three-bedrooms in each unit. And then the clubhouse has clubhouse activities on the first floor along with five one-bedroom units and then three, excuse me, two three-bedroom units on the second floor. So there's a total of the 180 existing units plus 48 residential buildings, and then eight units in the clubhouse with a total of 236 units on the site.
Ted, the 180 units were what was approved in 1989. They've been built and developed.
That is correct.
Okay, so we're now focusing on the design proposed for the new, the five new residential buildings, one of which has a clubhouse on the first floor.
Correct.
Can you describe those?
Sure. Can you go to the next slide? So this is a rendering of one of the residential units. Talking about materials, starting from the top down, and they are dimensional asphalt shingles. We have fiber cement horizontal lap siding with bands of trim and in a blue and beige, which I'll show you on the next slide, is matching almost what's there. There are added columns and balconies, which you'll see on the next slide, does not exist, but we've added balconies. And you'll also notice that there are no AC air conditioners. If you go to the next slide, this is an existing building, not far away. And so it looks, as you can see, it looks very similar, except where those covered entrances are, we have added balconies. And yeah, we got rid of all the window air conditioners. So go to the next slide. So this is a floor plan, a typical floor plan of the residential buildings. And you can see, you can see that there's one bedroom units in the middle on the first floor, two bedrooms on the left side, and a, and a three-bedroom and a one-bedroom on the right side. The stairs go up. You'll see that there's individual entrances on three sides. The stairs go up to the second floor. And in the second floor, once again, we have two bedrooms on the left, one bedrooms in the middle, a three-bedroom on one side and a one-bedroom on the back. Very simple.
Now, Ted, are each of these buildings stacked in the same format that the plan on the first floor is repeated on the second floor?
Yes, each building is exactly the same. So then, the owner wanted to sort of give a little bit back to the community. So the next slide is, shows, oh, this is a typical residential building. Sorry, this is a typical entrances. You can see how we separated the entrances around the building. Now, next slide. So getting back to the community, this is the clubhouse. The clubhouse has communal rooms on the first floor. But we also wanted to upgrade the elevation a little bit, so on, it still has the asphalt shingles on the roof. It's got the horizontal clipboard siding, fiber cement siding around it, but it also has vertical siding in the middle. And it has a stone veneer around the base of the building, just to dress it up a little. Next slide. So the first floor, as you can see on the lower plan, the first floor has a fitness center, a lounge, and other communal spaces, also has a, the office for the complex as well as workspace for the complex. And then in the back, you'll see that there is a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom on the first floor. Now, going to the second floor, there are units on the second floor. There was a question about lighting. There are required lights on the exit doors of the stairways, which will be shielded. And there is one light on the balcony in the back, which will also be shielded.
All those lights are required to meet the building code?
That is correct. And these buildings are all designed to the 2018 New Jersey IBC.
In fire protection.
And a fire protection code.
So they'll all be sprinkled buildings?
Yes, sir. I think that's it.
Well, from me, no. So I'm going to say, Ted, that that outlined the presentation showing the exhibits of the buildings that are proposed. Is there any other information that you want to provide about this site to the board at this moment with regard to the architecture?
No, I've, I've went around the site before we designed the buildings, and we wanted to make the buildings fit in with, be contiguous with the other buildings, upgrade them a little bit and make them a little bit more contemporary, but also to design the clubhouse so to give something back to the community.
Now, in terms of the landscaping, that will be discussed.
We discussed by Rob Espaza.
But in your, you participated in making, in ordaining the landscaping with the design, so it's appropriate scale and power scheme and so forth?
And with the neighbor, we, with the neighborhood, we wanted the landscaping to fit in with what's there already.
Mr. Chairman, I have no other direct questions for Mr. Osborne.
Thank you, Mr. Junko. I'm going to ask my fellow board members, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Osborne? Mr. Martins?
Where are the laundry facilities?
So each, each unit will have a laundry facility, I believe?
Yes, each unit will have its own washer and dryer.
Yeah, it's a closet unit, up and lower, you know, an upper and a lower.
It'll be internal to the unit, it'll be inside each unit.
Miss, yeah, okay. Mr. Yous?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cantor?
You, you, please correct me for one. You currently have 180 units there now, and you're thinking to put 56 more in, correct?
That is correct.
What's the estimate on the number of people that are currently there, you know, families, sizes, and the number of people that would be added? Do you factor that in?
I wouldn't know that number. I can, I can, we can find that out for you and get back.
Ted, can you research that and can you report back to the board?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Let me just get that straight. You want to know the occupancy by population count of the existing units?
Yeah, your estimate on the, on the percentage, your estimate on the number of people that are going to be added, yeah. Sure.
Mr. Moretti?
No, sir, nothing at this time.
Mr. Rebel?
Nothing for me right now.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes, sir.
So in the clubhouse building, you know, the thing that comes to mind is you got apartments sitting up on top of the clubhouse, right? So, you know, is, you know, noise, hours of use, you know, what's, what's the mix there? How does that work? Normally, clubhouses are segregated from, you know, the building.
So the hours of, the hours of use will be during the day. They'll be, and it's not meant to be a clubhouse for, there's no kitchen, there's no entertaining, that kind of thing. It's more of just a gathering space, common space. There is a fitness center, which will be limited in terms of daylight hours. And then the other part is the office for the complex. So that'll obviously just be during the hours of working hours.
Thank you. Jen? No question?
No.
Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of quick questions, and I'm going to share my screen real quick. Or attempt to share my screen. So this is the applicant's site plan. I believe this is sheet number three of 16 on their most recent revised site plan. So I'm turning the hand tool on here. So this is the clubhouse building. Mr. Junko is the architect. Can he provide some testimony regarding the location of the AC units? I know you said all the existing buildings have window units, but all the new units are going to have exterior ground-mounted ACs. Can he provide some testimony on the location, noise and impact potentially to adjacent properties? I know West of here is an existing mobile home community. And then also with regards to the clubhouse, I think the other four units had some balcony spaces. Whether a balcony is proposed for the clubhouse, where that's located, is it overlooking onto other properties? I'm just looking for some more information on that.
Ted, are you able to answer those in general?
Limited. So, yes, the, as you can see on the drawing, where your hand was right there, there are condenser units, two-by-two condenser units. They're small residential-type condenser units. And those are those little boxes. Also, right where that arrow, if you continue that arrow to the arrow to the building, there is a balcony right there that would look at it, the property line. That's the one with the lighting that I talked about, which will be shielded. And then if you go back out, you can see it all the four other buildings, those same little boxes are on the plan. Those are condenser units as well. It's calls out the two-by-two condenser concrete pads. That's where the condensers for the air conditioning units are. Now, as to testifying to the decibels, I cannot do that at this time. I can certainly research and get back to them if that's what you wish.
So that, so that clubhouse requires nine condensing units? I mean, that's what's shown.
I mean, that's what's shown right there, right?
Right, that's correct. But I, you know what? We have not, I have not done the mechanical systems yet in the building, so it may not be nine. In, in the clubhouse, um, there are eight units plus the clubhouse, so it would be, uh, probably nine, nine condensers, yes.
So, and just to add to what Jen's kinda asking is, you know, the township has a noise ordinance or certain decibels that need to be adhered to during daytime and nighttime activities. You know, nine units in the middle of summer at twelve o'clock at night. You know, when we're in close proximity to a residential property line to an adjacent development, I think is important information that the board might be interested in hearing about. Uh, and then just another, I know there was a comment about, um, you know, that the clubhouse is giving back to the community. And I just want to clarify for the board, is this clubhouse you're serving the residents in this development or is this open to residents outside of the development?
It's within the development. The community I was speaking of is the community of the development.
Okay.
Now, as to the, the noise ordinance, we will definitely comply. We will look into it and shield if necessary.
So I would say you definitely have to do that because this is a used variance and you're gonna have to demonstrate no negative impact. So noise impact to an adjacent property is a negative impact. So you need to deal with that before we can address the, the planning testimony for this application.
Okay. That's all I have for architecture right now, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Can I just ask, when you say it's just for the, uh, res, like the, the use of the clubhouse, is it for the, for the new buildings only or is it for the?
It's for the entire community.
Entire community. So the old buildings plus?
Entire development, yes.
Okay. So, Andy, just to, to piggyback, what does that mean? So like if I wanted to have a graduation party for my grandkid, I could have that there because I'm a resident and there could be a hundred people coming to the clubhouse to celebrate my grandchild's graduation because I'm a resident of the community.
So, um, they, they would allow to, to limit. I mean, you've gotta meet fire code. You're not gonna put a hundred people in that, in that space. But yes, it would be allowed. There's a pool, there's, there's grounds, there's a playground. However, you know, you still have to meet and comply with normal building codes.
I get it, but like people standing, it's one person per seven square feet. So I'm guessing that there's probably more than enough room for quite a number of people that you have not, you know, been able to accommodate parking wise. Is that correct?
You made a statement. I can't support that statement.
Okay, I'm just saying, you know, the building code for a person that's standing is one person per seven square feet standing. So,
Correct, but.
Right, so I'm just saying, yes, it's open to the people that live there, but they could have a party, because I've been to those parties with kids, with people that are having graduation parties for their grandchildren, and there have been more than fifteen people that have been invited. So the parking space is associated with that, and I'm assuming that you're gonna have an engineer testify, because you, you know, I'm just bringing this up, the engineer's gonna have to address the fact that that space is open to the, to the membership, but there's no limits on what they can do with it. So therefore, he's gonna have to address the adequacy of the parking.
We will look into that. We, and we'll talk to the owner and determine, you know, what kind of policies and procedures they want to put in place.
And Jen, just to piggyback on your comments, you know, our, our consideration of the parking calculations was only based off of the per unit parking requirement per RSIS and then the general office space in the community center, not any like communal meeting, uh, type facilities, which would, uh, you know, certainly change the parking demand.
I agree. So that's why I brought it up.
Okay, so any more questions for Mr. Osborne? Not hearing any. Mr. Junko, who else do you have that can present tonight that is not? And, will he be presenting?
He's our civil engineer, Espaza, E S P A S A. Yes, thank you, Ted.
Charlie, you good? We'll go through the engineering?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Espazo, you're gonna need to be sworn in and put your credentials on the record. So, Mr. Bear?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Espaza, the use, way that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Can you please state your name for the record and spell your last?
Robert Espaza, E S P A S A.
Witness is sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Sure, Espaza, can, can you give us your credentials, you know?
Sure. So I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since two thousand and one. I've been preparing site plans in the state of New Jersey for the last twenty-five years. I currently work as a vice president at PSNS in the civil engineering department. I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from Rutgers University, University. I prepared testimony before dozens of boards in the state of New Jersey, not this board though.
Okay, we accept your credentials, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Rob, did you or others under your direction prepare the site plans and exhibits that will present this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, in that regard, do you currently have access to the exhibit list?
I can bring up that same PowerPoint presentation, unless it can be brought up again.
Well, I don't know the answer to that, Keith. Okay, we're gonna put it up for you. When you need an exhibit, if you could just refer, uh, Keith will be able to put it up for us.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we're now gonna, uh, put the exhibit up for Rob. Okay, Rob, were these exhibits prepared by you or others under your direction for presentation to this board this evening?
Yes, they were.
Did you describe, uh, this first overall aerial photo as it's identified in the, uh, in the title block on the lower right-hand side?
Sure. So this is an existing conditions aerial photograph, uh, kinda zoomed out pretty far so we can see the site outlined in black and the surrounding developments and roadways, uh, just to orientate everybody. Way up, I don't know if you can see my, I won't be able to see my mouse here. Can I request control?
There's a mouse on the screen.
Yes, it's not mine. Anyway, so, um, all the way to the right, you'll see, uh, Rutenheim and then just to the south of our property line is, uh, West Farms Road. And the site is surrounded by a mobile home community to the, to the west, to the north and to the east. There's also another one across the street on the other side of West Farms Road. I have another exhibit that kinda zoomed.
A little bit to the west, could you describe the development to the west along West Farms Road?
Yeah, so that's the, um, Kaotanian Four Seasons development. Um, and we'll talk about some of that landscaping, uh, in front of that site a little bit later with the landscape architect.
And as you proceed further down, uh, West Farms Pastore site, is there a, uh, 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 an affordable housing project at that intersection?
There is. Yes, just passed it.
And we are, where that, where the cursor is now, that's Rutenheim, correct?
That's correct.
And the Home Depot is located at that intersection also?
Right there, yes, correct.
Okay, so as we come back to our site, can you now describe to the board the, uh, any other characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood that you want to bring to the board's attention?
I think if we go to the next, uh, image, yeah, it kinda zooms it a little closer and you can see the subject of the application is, is three lots all within, uh, block one thirty-eight. Uh, all three of these lots will be consolidated to create a, uh, sixteen point seven seven acre lot. So the large lot, um, that contains the existing development, uh, countryside place, uh, is known as Lot Forty-two. It's located in the R-four zone. And as you heard, it was currently developed with, uh, fifteen garden apartments consisting of a hundred eighty units. Uh, that site is fourteen point eight nine acres and has access to North American Drive, which, uh, connects to West Front Street at the, uh, southeast corner of the site. The two, uh, you see a rectangle and a square to the left. Those are the two single family homes uh, that are being acquired and will be, like I said, consolidated, uh, with the, uh, with the larger lot. So that, uh, large rectangular lot.
I just asked you, you said West Front Street? Do you mean West Farms Road?
West Farms Road, I'm sorry, yes.
Thanks.
So that rectangle is, um, a single family home on Lot Forty-three. Uh, consists of a, a single family home with a shed and, um, an onsite septic system and a water well. Uh, the, uh, the build at the home and the, um, shed will be demolished and the septic tank and the well will be decommissioned in accordance with regulate, the appropriate regulations. Uh, that site is zero point nine seven acres, nine six acres, sorry. And the property just to the west of that is Lot Forty-four, another single family home, uh, with a pool, a deck and sheds, also consists of a, a well and a septic system. And that will be, uh, demolished and decommissioned similar to the property, uh, just to the east of that. And that site is zero point nine two acres.
So now as you, did you also prepare a plan to show the proposed continuance or completion of the development?
Yes, that's the next image.
Okay. Can you describe the, uh, proposal to the board?
Sure. So this is a, um, a landscape plan rendering of the improvements, uh, overlaid on top of an aerial. So you can see the existing buildings and then, uh, rendered in here are the proposed five new buildings with the landscaping, the new parking lots, uh, islands and stormwater management and obviously the landscaping.
So could you describe the internal access and circulation to the site?
Yeah, so just where that pointer is now, that's the existing entrance into the site. Um, from West Farms Road in, onto North American Drive. Uh, the parking lots to the west will be extended, um, so that, um, you have access to the new, the five new buildings. And there'll be parking lots brought down to the south and to the southwest.
Okay. Can you describe to the board the aisle, proposed aisle widths and parking space size?
Sure. Parking space sizes are nine feet by nineteen feet in accordance with the ordinance. Um, parking aisles are, are, are smaller than the ordinance requirements. Um, the ordinance requires thirty-six feet for major, uh, parking drives and, uh, thirty feet for parking aisles. Uh, we range here between twenty-five feet and thirty feet. Um, but they have been designed in accordance with the residential site improvement standards, uh, for circulation for a development of this type. Um, that requirement is twenty-four feet. Uh, like I said, we have twenty-five feet up to thirty feet, um, which provides, uh, safe circulation. It also limits the amount of impervious surface and, uh, the runoff generator from that impervious surface.
Okay, now, did you also design a stormwater management collection system for this, this portion of this project?
Yes, we did. So.
Stormwater management. Comply, did Hal, as Hal Township adopted, was known as a, yeah, the DEP Stormwater Management Recommended Ordinances?
Yes, they have.
And in that regard, did you prepare a plan that's in compliance with the NJDEP standards that have been adopted by the township?
Yes, we did.
So could you describe the proposed design and demonstrate compliance with the standards?
Sure. So the stormwater management system consists of really three components. Uh, what you see at the southwest corner there in the green is a, uh, above-ground infiltration basin. So that is collecting all the runoff from the, uh, paved areas, the parking areas, um, the driveways. That all gets piped into this system. Uh, where, uh, we meet the stormwater requirements for groundwater recharge, water quality control and water quantity control. So, um, stormwater is infiltrated through the sand bottom. It's, it's filtered through a media where it gets cleaned up and provides eighty percent total suspended solid, uh, removals. It also infiltrates into the ground, uh, providing groundwater recharge that's required. And also, um, attenuates the peak flow rates so that the post-development flows are less than pre-development flows in accordance with the regulations. Uh, the other two components are underground recharge systems. One is located, uh, in the parking lot just to the north of that infiltration basin. And there's another one, uh, located in the parking lot just to the, uh, right there, um, to the, uh, e- east of the clubhouse. So there's one there and there's one to this, one in there, correct? Um, so those handle the peak, uh, the roof runoff from the five buildings. Roof runoff is considered clean, so there's no real water quality, uh, component to it, but it does provide again groundwater recharge and also attenuates the peak flow runoff rates again to reduce the, uh, the post-development flow to below the peak flow, uh, pre-developed peak flow rates in accordance with the stormwater regulations.
Based upon your design and your calculations, uh, does this, uh, design meet the standards of the RSI or the, uh, uh, Howell Township and NJDEP ordinances for stormwater management?
Yes, it does.
You seeking any waivers or deviations from those standards?
No.
Are you providing a sewer and water utility to this site?
We are.
Can you describe for the board the, uh, the two utility systems, sanitary sewage and of course, uh, potable water?
Sure. So for sanitary sewer, uh, we're basically extending the sanitary, sanitary sewer system of the existing development, um, which trains from these, you know, from the south to the northeast. So we're providing a new eight-inch, um, sanitary sewer lateral that connects into the system uh, just to the, um, west of that, uh, building number one. So we'll have a pipe coming down that main driveway down towards the south. And the five buildings will connect into that line and, uh, discharge the sanitary system up to the north to the existing system on site. Uh, there's also another component to sanitary sewer. So at the southwest corner, just off our property at the southwest corner of the site there, there's an existing pump station. Uh, that is pumping, uh, as a force main that pumps flow from the, uh, mobile home development into the site, uh, which connects into the existing sanitary sewer system, uh, on the, on the development site. Uh, currently it would go through the infiltration basin, so we need to reroute that. So, um, it'll come into the site, turn up along the western property line and then turn east just south of the clubhouse building and connect back into the existing, uh, sanitary system that's on site.
And, uh, you're satisfied that those, uh, systems are adequate to continue the, uh, existing service and add the additional, uh, fifty-six apartments?
Yes.
Okay. And did you also make provisions to provide water to the site?
John, could I just jump in for a second there? I just wanna clarify for the board or ask Mr. Espaza to clarify for the board. So, so there's a pump station that's located to the southwest of the site, um, and you're rerouting a, a forced sanitary main to tie into an extension that, to the existing gravity main, uh, for the existing garden apartment facility. Can you talk about who owns it, uh, what kind of easements are gonna be proposed and in place and who's gonna be responsible for maintaining those improvements?
Sure, yeah. So it is owned by New Jersey American Water. Um, the easement will have to be redone as we're gonna reconfigure the alignment, um, but that will be prepared by our office and, uh, given to New Jersey American Water. Uh, and New Jersey American Water will own and operate the, uh, the force main.
And you'll provide, uh, or the applicant can provide copies of all those documents as a condition of any potential board approval?
Yes, they will.
Yes, once we, uh, once the, uh, systems are finalized, we can propose the, uh, well, we'll, of course, speak with you, identify the, uh, nature of the, of the easements that you prefer. We'll prepare them in accordance with Hal Township, uh, previously approved documents and, uh, submit them with the, uh, meets and bounds descriptions or descriptions as directed by the engineering office.
Okay, you can keep going, Mr. Espaza.
Okay, so, uh, the next thing I want to talk about was the. Okay, so the next thing I want to talk about was the water system, so similar to sanitary. We will be extending the, the water system from the existing development, again, down to the south of the site to feed the five proposed buildings. Each building will have a meter. And from the meter, there'll be a separate connection for fire and domestic service to each of the five buildings. Similar to sanitary, New Jersey American Water will own and operate the, the water lines up to the meters.
Equipment fixtures for both of these systems will be in compliance with the municipal requirements or the appropriate service agency requirements.
Yes, they will.
All right, now with regard to the internal traffic signage and striping, have you, can you just describe that to the board and then advise us to whether that would be in compliance with the manual on uniform traffic control device?
Yeah, so we have the standard traffic signage that you expect to see at a development here in conformance with the NJTCD. We also are proposing fire lanes so that there are no vehicles parked along the curb lines in accordance with the, the fire department standards as well.
Okay, now. Were the, were these, will the utilities for telephone, electric and gas lines be in underground?
They will all be underground, yes.
Okay.
But we still have a couple of utility poles in the buffer requiring relief, correct?
I, I don't think so, but we can ask that testimony. Rob, you were advised during the review of the plan that several utility poles were located to be inside the buffer, is that correct?
When we say utility.
Two light poles.
Light poles, yes. So we were able to relocate those. So on the latest plans, the light pole was moved just outside of the buffer between the existing curb line and the fifty-foot buffer.
So what plans are those? Because I have plans dated recently and the two light poles are still located in the buffer area, so what's the date on the poles that you're talking about?
These are revised July thirteenth?
Yeah, I have plans dated July eighth. So we don't have those plans?
Those were submitted. Charlie, I don't know if you could bring the the site plan, the lighting plan up, or I can try to do that.
Lighting plan, please.
I have it open if you need me to share it. You just gotta stop sharing, Bob.
Um, yeah, okay.
So this is sheet number seven of sixteen, it's the applicant's revised plan seven thirteen twenty twenty-two. So, so there's still, so this line that's very faint dashed is the fifty-foot buffer line required off of West Farms Road because it's a collector road. I think we still cited in our letter as.
Pole is still in the buffer. That requires variance.
Can you relocate that pole?
Yeah, we can do, we can move it to the east side of the sidewalk and flip it where there's a little bit more room. But we, we can certainly get that out of the buffer.
So you're, you're proposing to the board you'll redesign that and not request the variance, is that correct?
Correct.
And Bob, just to clarify for the board, that, that light is for the purposes of illuminating the sidewalk, linking the public sidewalk to the private sidewalk on the site?
That's correct.
Okay, so I mean, eliminating it entirely, I don't think would be what something the board wants to consider from a public safety perspective. So we want to just make sure obviously that, you know, if it's relocated, still providing adequate, you know, lighting just for e, safe egress ingress from the site, so.
Hey, Rob, before we leave this exhibit, immediately to the left of that light pole is a grass paper area. That's encroaching in the, in the buffer, isn't it?
It is, that's an emergency fire access lane requested by the fire department.
Have you reviewed this plan with the fire chief?
They have reviewed it and they had no comments on it, no further comments on it.
Now, is that going to be open for the public's use or is it only going to be available in event of emergency with the appropriate knockbox and open and access to the fire and police services?
It'll be gated with a knockbox just for the fire department or emergency vehicles.
And what is the material that that's going to be? It says grass paper, what's that going to look like?
So these are circular concrete rings that allow grass to grow through the rings, so it's not really visible. So we wanted to put that in there just to kind of blend in with the, with the landscape buffer instead of having a hard paved material.
And you've, you've been requested to maintain that by the fire officials, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that would still require relief from the board, but I would take no exception to the board acting affirmatively on that relief.
I'm gonna stop sharing so you can get back to your presentation.
So continuing along, Rob, did you receive a review letter from T and M, Charlie Cunliffe, review number three?
Latest was review number four, yes.
Okay, that was a question as to the lighting temperature of the lights and the maximum pole height. Can you confirm three thousand K and fourteen feet?
Yes, the light poles will be in conformance with the existing light poles that are out there today. And the temperature will be three thousand Kelvin and the light mounting height will be fourteen feet. Where, where twenty-five feet is allowable by, by code, we're at fourteen feet to, to meet the existing lighting.
And you heard Ted Osborne's testimony about the lighting, the building mounting lighting? Is there any additions to that or are you satisfied he described it completely?
No, I'm satisfied with his, with his testimony.
And there was a reference to screening or shading of those lights, the lamps, could you say what, could you explain what that would do?
So are you talking about, you're talking about the west side lighting by the clubhouse?
On the, on the buildings? The screening, the shielding for the lighting on the buildings, is that intended to cast it downward so it doesn't create a glare upwards or outwards?
Yes, it'll be directed downwards. And there's no light spillage beyond the property lines.
Okay, and you've, you've prepared that as part of your submission, correct?
Sure.
Lighting code, lighting map showing that?
Correct.
Okay. Now, further as we move along, you received comments as to environment, environmental and utility. You've already testified that the water system would be owned by New Jersey American. Is that also the system, that sewer and water will be owned by the same company?
Oh, correct.
New Jersey American would own the, except the sewer and New Jersey American Water Company for the water, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you're in a position to deliver easements needed to the utility which can provide access not just to the utility or the property owner, but also to the township, emergency services if needed?
Yes.
Now, with regard to the general site plan, there were a number of comments and could you address? Could you go through your report or the comments? I think there's several you would like to make on that. Well, if you could just perhaps start with the playground area and the pool and describe what that would be like and what's proposed for that.
Yeah, so at, at the clubhouse, there are some amenities proposed on the, and again, maybe we can bring up that site plan. But on the east side of the clubhouse, there is a, a pool area proposed and also a playground slash tot lot just to the north of the pool area.
And just to clarify for the record, this is sheet number four of sixteen of the most recent site plans revised July thirteen twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Okay. And with further, was a woodlands management plan required?
There was, yes.
And did you receive any company view comments with regard to that?
We did, Ms. Bureau had comments on that. Due to the fact that we're removing trees, there is a tree replacement obligation. The applicant has agreed to plant sufficient number of trees, not only within this the footprint of the proposed work, but also within the existing community. They're proposing two hundred eighty-four trees to make up for the deficit that is being removed, so there's no net obligation to contribute to a tree fund. All the trees will be planted on, on the site.
Carrie?
Yes, Mr. Sayes.
Is that possible?
Yes, they are putting, as of right now, it's showing between the plantings they're putting in on the buffer and then throughout the entire site. They do meet the obligation.
Okay, so while we're speaking of the buffer, Rob, did you or others, under your direction, prepare the proposed plans for the buffer?
Yes, we did.
And in that, in those proposals, could you just describe the plan that's in front of the board on, on this sheet four of sixteen?
Yeah, so.
Or sixteen, corrected.
Yeah. It might show better on the, the color exhibit in the, in the PowerPoint, there you go.
This one?
Yep.
Okay.
So this is the, the design that's in front of the board today. And hopefully you can see the difference, so there's existing vegetation along West Farms Road. Yep, all throughout there is mature vegetation that we're trying to maintain as much as possible. That provides current screening. And then we are supplementing it with additional lands, additional evergreens and deciduous trees to provide supplemental screening within the buffer. To kind of screen those, those new homes, those new buildings that are closest to West Farms Road. And as you go a little bit further west in front of the detention basin, there is some existing vegetation out there today. We walked the site with Ms. Bureau. It's not as dense in this area as it is as you go to the east. And also with the installation of the sidewalk and the demolition of that single-family home, it's really not feasible to save some of that vegetation, so we are providing a little landscape berm about four and a half feet high and then we're going to plant it, as you can see here, with pretty robust evergreens and deciduous trees here to provide this additional screening.
And would this plan be in conformance with the ordinance?
It doesn't quite meet the Four Seasons offer requirement. Because we are, you know, trying to maintain some of that existing vegetation, it doesn't give us the room to do you know, what's required in, in the, in the ordinance. So we are seeking relief for that, but we, like I said, we are supplementing it pretty significantly with additional plantings to, to provide the necessary screening.
So Bob, and just to clarify that for the board, so where the, where the existing vegetation is being removed and you're planting new landscape plantings, there is going to be grading to create a berming and plantings on the, on the berm. It's in the areas where existing mature vegetation is to remain, a berm can't be created without altering, you know, taking out the vegetation to create a berm?
That's correct, yes.
All right, you can keep going.
Rob, did you prepare any alternative plans for the buffer?
We did, yes. So that's the next slide down. Go down one more, sorry, one more down. Yeah, so, yep, that's it.
All right, can you describe this plan?
So this was inspired by the, the Four Seasons development. Again, across the street about maybe less than a quarter mile west of the site. Where our client or the applicant kind of liked the look of that, that design as a meandering sidewalk. Some, some grasses, some low-level vegetation and then a decorative fence line behind it. And then behind that fence is where you see the, the proposed screening trees, the evergreens and deciduous trees to provide the landscaping buffer and, and screening, so. The photos in the top right here are photos of the existing Four Seasons site. So that's kind of how it looks at the Four Seasons today with the meandering sidewalk, the grass, the low-level landscaping, the ornamental fence, and then behind the fence is the, is where you have the, the bigger trees for, for screening. So it's a little more costly for, for the applicant, but they like the look of this and they would prefer to build something like this and get the board's approval on this.
And that meets the intent of the ordinance?
Say that again?
That meets the intent of the ordinance?
I mean, I would defi, I would defer to Shari with respect to what exactly the intent is in terms of what the requirements are.
Okay.
Um, so I would like, Rob, are you going to continue on? Because we did discuss this and we have another alternate plan. So do you want to continue first before we come?
Yeah, so I was going to mention that Ms. Bureau and I had a conversation with our landscape architect and Mr. Cunliffe and we presented this option. Ms. Bureau suggested a, another, another site that's nearby, I believe it's it's around the corner, I think it's in Freehold actually. But it has a combination of this meandering walkway and keeping some of the existing vegetation. It's kind of a hybrid of the two plans that, that we have here. And the next slide is kind of what that shows. We didn't have time to color it, but it's, it's like I said, a little bit of a hybrid, so it does keep that existing vegetation. You can see that in the, the southeast corner. That, that white area with the bubble, that's, that's existing vegetation to remain. And then you see the meandering sidewalk and then again proposed vegetation behind it. Where we can't keep some of the existing vegetation where we'll supplement with, with evergreen trees for, for screening. So Ms. Bureau kind of pushed us towards this option where it saves some of the existing vegetation and screening and also allows the meandering sidewalk.
Rob, would you be able to put these exhibits together in one package so that they could be comparatively reviewed by the consultants to the board?
Absolutely.
So, and Bob, if I could just chime in, I don't want to put words in Shari's mouth at all, but I think the discussion was what was currently presented as part of the site plan application certainly looked like it fully complied and met the intent of what the buffering ordinance is. Now, the applicant indicated they wanted to present additional alternatives that might also achieve that. Um, you know, and we brought up the point about, obviously, it's a fifty-foot width, you know, that has to be landscaped and burned. So, you know, it wasn't like this was dictated by the board's professionals as, you know, this is a preferred alternative. This was, you know, if you wanted to do something different, that second option would probably not be what the board would be looking for, maybe something more to this third option, but to clarify, the first option that was presented with the site plan, you know, apart from the emergency access and like the one light pole, I think seems to fully comply, you know, with the intent of the ordinance and Shari, you can clarify if I'm wrong on that.
Correct, yeah, their second option without saving the trees, you know, I mean, we had met out there on site, those trees do provide a pretty dense buffer, so I didn't really want to push them towards this option, take everything down, so I was, would like them to save that as much as they can along with this. along with this, the other buffer screening that they're proposing.
I think we understand that and appreciate it. What happened here is our clients were looking at the site and they wanted us to ask the board to consider that they could replicate or come close to replicating the similar project nearby and that they thought that would improve the streetscape. However, we are not, we don't need to break new ground to request difficult variances. So, Rob, could I ask, would you be in a position to review these plans further, have a further discussion with Ms. Spiro? And based on that, submit a comparative analysis, a comparative set of plans for the board to review. The applicant is willing to do either, but ask the board to consider that this may be more attractive for, at least from our client's perspective. So we're not, we're not looking to create significant variances, if any. In fact, Rob, I'd like you to ask, to try and have the plan be in compliance with the ordinance, either both plans.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay. So we have that.
Mr. Junko?
Yes.
Do you have anything else from Mr. Espaza, or can I open it up to?
I do. I have two or three more questions. They'll be relatively short.
Please proceed.
Mr. Espaza, you understand the request, the variances that would be requested. As a general perspective, as an engineer, Mr. Chairman, we will have planning testimony for each of the individual variances. But as a general perspective, from an engineering perspective, do you think that any of these particular variances, not the bulk variances, not the use, just the bulk variances, offer any benefits that would outweigh any detriments and simultaneously not upset the zoning scheme or plan, but actually achieve its purposes?
Yes, I don't really see any negatives. The benefits, obviously, the apartments will benefit the public good.
I'm just going to stop you right there.
Yeah, Jen.
You're going to have a planner, right?
We, yes.
So, I mean, we didn't get into the weeds on this, John. I'm sorry, but like, you, he's talking about the layout. He's not talking about like the pros and cons of all the stuff. If you want to go through the variances one by one, I'm more than happy to weigh in on each individual one. But I know you have a planner. So like, I don't, I'm not understanding what the purpose of this is.
Well, then I won't proceed, Jen. I will present the testimony through Ms. Cofone. And Rob will be available if necessary to supplement that testimony.
I would recommend that.
Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions from or for Mr. Espaza.
Okay. All board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Okay, my question, I guess this ties into the buffer. Charlie, could you pull up the landscape plan and kind of focus on the clubhouse area? Yeah, that's good. I like the design along the West Farms part of it, but is there any kind of buffer along between each trailer homes and the proposed two-story building for the clubhouse? Because it almost looks like they're almost right on top of each other. And then going back to what our planner said, there is AC units that are going to be in that side too. So I'm concerned that we're going to have to really, you know, think about how we're going to keep the noise from the people in the trailer homes.
Yeah, it's a good question. And we had this conversation with Ms. Spiro and Mr. Conliff to provide some supplemental landscaping along that western property line adjacent to the clubhouse building to screen it from view from the neighboring development and also to provide some sound attenuation with some landscaping. So we have agreed to do that, and that will be added to the next set of plans.
Shari is on the trailer park side. You've been to the site. Is there mature trees there between their trailer homes and this property?
You know, I will say we were focused on the buffer along the West Farms road. We didn't walk against those ones over there. I mean, based on the arrow, it doesn't look like it. But yeah, we didn't get over there.
Yeah, because I mean, and my thinking is I would rather see the clubhouse shrunk and just be used as a clubhouse. But obviously, the applicant isn't going to be getting any money just on the clubhouse. So.
I agree, though. We could shrink the footprint and put some landscaping along that buffer, along that property line that would buffer the homes immediately to the west.
Yeah, because as it stands now, you're not going to be able to get large evergreen trees in there. There's something over there. What do you, um, there's a utility line or something going along that side of the building that you can't plant, you know, larger trees. We were talking about narrow evergreens.
Yeah, and you're limited, it looks like to me, based on the square footage. I mean, I'm looking at the plan, but without actually being on the site, I'm only imagining it's going to be a tight spot.
Is there a buffer requirement between that clubhouse and the property line?
Is there what?
A buffer requirement or a setback or something that would separate the clubhouse from that yellow property line?
There should be, yes.
Are we in compliance with that?
So technically, it's residential against residential, but yeah, there needs to be some kind of separation for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, my other question, I guess I can see more clearly is the refuge areas. They are to the west side of the parking lot. Yeah, where you're, that's refuge?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
And I just want to say that I believe the side yard setback is 10 feet.
He wasn't asking about a side yard setback. He was asking about a buffer.
Mr. Hughes, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Martin's kind of covered it. Just for the applicant's purpose, because I'm assuming that, you know, we're going to have another meeting on this, the, you know, the sound there with the air conditioners and now that I'm really seeing on this particular rendering real close. I mean, that's definitely something to please, you know, look at, address and figure out. But yeah, that's, that's just, I just wanted to bring that up just as something that's a concern of mine right now, if we're going back to planning stage. But other than that, I'm okay at the moment.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rubell?
A couple of quick questions regarding the stormwater management system and the upkeep. I was reading through the operations and maintenance manual, and I know how important it is to upkeep these things. Number one reason they fail is because they get silted up. Is there an HOA in place for this, for this development that will be responsible for upkeep and inspection of these facilities, the one surface basin and the two below-grade basins?
Yeah, that's correct. There is an HOA and they'll be responsible for maintenance and ownership.
This is not a for sale or ownership project. It's a, it's a for rent project. So the owner, the owner management is responsible for the maintenance operation and continuation of the project. There will not be a homeowners association because there are not homeowners or tenants.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all you got, sir?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Moretti?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, do we get all the board members? It looks like we have. Charlie, Jen?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So just to piggyback on Mr. Rubell's comment, so obviously, we're going to require his condition, any approval that applicant's going to be required to record the stormwater maintenance, stormwater management operation, operation and maintenance manual. Sorry, it's a tongue twister there. By deed with the owner of the property listed as the responsible party. We'd also ask that the applicant grant the township a blanket easement for emergency access purposes, both for, you know, emergency response, but also for, you know, if the applicant isn't following through on their maintenance responsibilities with the basin, they have the ability to come on the site and do same, and then, you know, enforce any liens that would be necessary if there is a lack of maintenance. I just want to touch on stormwater management. There's been a lot of back and forth with the applicant's engineering professional team. You know, there was an allusion to this being my number four letter issue for the application. That's because there was a lot of conflicting soil testing information. The applicant did do additional soil testing information observed by my office, which kind of rectified a lot of those concerns. They eliminated using exfiltration in the routing calculation, which is a good thing. So as far as from a stormwater management perspective, what you're seeing tonight and presented to the board, I'm comfortable, Mr. Chair. It complies with the town's ordinance and the DEP standards. I did have some comments in my letter that were more so, you know, revising the plans so that the construction details are in agreements with the site plan and also with the stormwater manager report. Mr. Espaza, you've reviewed those comments and you're confident you can address those as a condition of any approval?
Yes, we agree to comply with all those comments, yes.
Okay. And then I just want to thumb through my letter and just make sure I didn't miss anything else. So we talked about no HOA. Parking, and we touched about this earlier. So you based, obviously, the residential parking based on RSIS for garden apartments and then also for an office use. You didn't include any calculation for like a general meeting area for event purposes in the community clubhouse building, correct?
Correct.
So when you come back to the board, if there is an intent by the applicant to utilize that for same, you'll provide a calculation demonstrating what that requirement is and where you are in terms of the township's ordinance requirements?
Yes.
And then as far as the site, so obviously, the proposed five buildings and what we're seeing on the screen here, it's your testimony that you're providing ADA accommodations with handicap parking, ADA accessible curb ramps to all the new buildings?
That's correct.
How about the remainder of the site? Obviously, it's been built since the late 80s, early 90s. Can you speak of the condition of those sidewalks and ramps throughout the remainder of the site and ADA compliance?
So I did see that comment in your letter.
That's not part of this application.
Well, you're consolidating the lots, right?
You are consolidating the lots.
The whole site is part of the application.
Correct.
So questions about the entirety of the lot, the site is absolutely appropriate.
Okay, so this is a good, this is a good jump off point where for the fellow board members, Mr. Bear and Jen, Countryside North American Drive, when it was first developed, this site was part of the COA commitment?
Correct.
Round one and round two, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So do we still have control over the COA commitment?
The applicant has taken the position that controls have expired and the township tax assessor has assessed the units, as I understand it, as the existing 180 units is market rate.
Market rate. So then the new proposed buildings, you know, this is not the first time I sat on a board, this board in my many years here, and there was always COA contribution. Are we looking at COA contribution here for the new units? And will that help and assist the township in meeting its goals?
So I think that's one of the items that we have not come to a meeting in the minds on. I think that Mr. Bear has, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, has requested a percentage of the units to be deed restricted moving forward to our next round. I don't know if there's been a commitment or an agreement on the applicant's part, which is one of the reasons why I don't think that there should be any planning testimony tonight, because I think this is something that needs to be addressed and handled before we move forward. But I do think that there's a disagreement on what exactly it is we should be in terms of affordable housing set aside, we should be getting as far as a township is concerned.
If any, I mean, I don't know, the applicant, as part of this application, hasn't made a, is that, I mean, I didn't sit in in the pre-board meetings, but that's the, has there been, I don't know that proposal's been made formally, at least through the application process.
I mean, we haven't gotten an official submission through the township at all, right, Andy?
Correct.
So, I mean, you know, it's definitely something that they're going to have to deal with because you know, they're going to have to justify the D1 variance, so.
If this was in front of the planning board, they would have the requirement then, correct?
Hmm, not necessarily.
Hey, if they didn't provide units, they would have to pay the one and a half percent development fee. But here, they're here for a D1 use variance. That puts us in a very different position.
I'd like the township to resolve that situation.
I understand, which is why I kind of was pushing back on moving forward with this earlier.
Okay, as long as we have it on the record, we understand where we're at.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Junko?
Bill, I look forward to another meeting with Mr. Bear and the township officials about the affordable housing. Our client does, did make, does, is willing to make a proposal based on this new development. We have a dispute, however, as to the retention of the controls that have expired by their own terms. And I believe our clients have acted appropriately with legal advice, and I will add, not from our law firms, as to how to go about the expiration of the controls, and I think they followed that, at least my review shows us. I don't think there's any residual obligations left at this point. Their 30 years is finished in the fall of this year. Going forward, I look forward to a further discussion with Mr. Bear. Earlier today, he raised some issues and suggested that we have another meeting where my clients have authorized me to conduct such a meeting. So, Mr. Bear, when you get a, if you want to send a date or two, I will make every point to meet those dates at your recommendation and will be in a position to discuss the affordable housing obligation that's applicable to this development at that time further. I don't think we have an agreement at this point as to what obligations exist or what legal rights are established, but we'll continue to develop that discussion.
Thank you, sir. So with hearing from the architect and hearing from the engineer, is there anybody else we can squeeze in on the record now? Or are we going to move this to another date?
I mean, I also think that there's some outstanding questions about traffic and the light and those type of things. So I think we should wait on that, too.
Mr. Chairman, we will address those issues with the, with the traffic report of Mr. Ray, who is prepared tonight to proceed, but at this point, I would request that we be given an adjournment, an opportunity to consult further with Mr. Bear and the township concerning affordable housing. And those issues, and in the meantime, our traffic engineers will consult with Mr. Conliff and T and M team as needed to understand those issues. That, I think there's a, that has to do with a request for a significant contribution to a intersection. And of course, there's a very established, both case law and statute as to those procedures, and I can tell you that our clients will comply with the established case law and statute.
Mr. Junko? Appreciate your, you're working along with this. One thing that concerns me is I'm looking at your existing building just north of the proposed, you know, clubhouse building. And you don't line up very well with it. The encroachment that my fellow board members brought up seems to be, seems to be, um you know, duly duly presented. I mean do you see what I'm looking at? Right there.
The intent of that was to meet the setback requirement, which if you move a little bit more towards the yellow line. There's a black dash line that I I believe is that setback line. And the 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 application complies with that requirement.
I just need to know, have we changed the ordinance? Or are we in compliance with the ordinance? Or should we be mirroring the existing set offset of the existing building?
So we have not changed the ordinance. That is the setback line. However, they're here for a use variance. So if you feel like what they're proposing creates a negative impact on the adjacent property, that's going to impact your decision on their use variance application. So if you feel like they should at least mirror the prop, the building immediately to the north. That's a legitimate concern that they need to address.
Mr. Junko, do you know?
Well, um I guess we could do away with the clubhouse, Mr. Chairman, if that's what you want. I mean my clients thought that would be a better way to operate.
I don't think he's asking you to do with the clubhouse, John. I think he's asking you to pull it off the property line. I think that's what he's asking you.
Well, I would agree. Get the pool in there, too, but what you want us to do is move the clubhouse to the west to have a similar setback line with the existing building immediately above it on this diagram. Is that that's that's what I'm understanding?
Yes.
So, and just to add to that.
Uh, we'll, we'll have our clients and designers look at it, but uh, okay.
So, and Mr. Chair just
May well diminish the pool, but we'll do what we have to do to comply.
Mr. Chair, just to add to that conversation, too. So going back to the nine, the eighty-nine approval, I believe there was specific language in that approval regarding um, you know, recreational kind of amenities for the development being installed and as a requirement and whether those had been constructed, you know, with the original approval. So, you know, if if the discussion of uh, you know, to ship the building to lose the pool or lose the tot lot, I don't think that is, you know, what the board is preferential to. I think you know, if those amenities can be saved, but the building footprint can be shrunk to mirror what's going on to the north. You know, whether it be by, maybe not necessarily the the common space element of the the clubhouse, but by reducing some units, maybe that might be you know, something that the board would be, uh, you know, looking for, you know, not to put words into board's mouth.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I may, real quickly, my my primary concern was the sound with the air conditioning. So I mean, if that can be addressed. You know, that's that's kind of what's in my head for whatever that's worth.
I'm just a little common sense here. That's what we're looking at, right?
Exactly.
Sound generation. The issue of the sound generation from the compressors was brought up early in the testimony. We advised that we would revisit the landscape there. Determine the uh, output or ju- sound generation from the uh uh, compressor units and if needed, uh, we'll be able to, uh, um encapsulate them individually or create a sound buffer. Because as we know, sound has to be stopped by something solid. Uh, so we could have one way or another to reduce the sound. I thought that was, uh requested, reasonably requested, and our clients authorized me to say that we would work on that and get that issue resolved. We don't want to cast any sound impacts to anyone else.
Okay.
And I do believe, obviously, there is, uh, you know, there is ordinances on that, too, to follow, too. So, but, uh, yeah, that's what I was talking about. And I think Mr. Mertens was also talking about it.
All good discussion, all good discussion. There's much more to be done here. So um, Mr. Junko, if we're going to adjourn, um, I would ask Eileen to, uh, to bring us up and and work with you.
Well, I don't think you won't be ready for August twenty second, I don't think.
Or, or do we open it to public for the professionals that have already just presented?
I would agree, Mr. Chairman. I think that would be a good idea because the, maybe there's some questions from the residents. It would be in advantage of the applicant to hear their concerns or whatever their comments are.
It's eight fifty-six. We got time. What do you say? Do we have a motion open to public?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to open the public, please.
Mr. Hughes?
I'll second it.
We got Mr. Moretti, all in favor.
Hi. Hi.
All right, Eileen, please open it to public. For the architect and the engineer only.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up to members of the public who have questions of the architect or engineer only. If you're want to be brought in, you need to use the raise your hand feature. You'll be brought in one at a time. You need to be sworn in and give your name and address. You will need audio and video. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand, star six to mute or unmute yourself.
And Mr. Junko, what we do is we normally give a minute. Block those that are to just determine whether or not they we have anybody that wants to go ahead and ask any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right now, I have no one.
Okay.
Just curious, Mr. Junko, do you feel that, obviously, when we come back, the same professionals will be available in case the public does have questions at that time?
Well, uh, if not, we'll have a totally competent and prepared can, uh, professional. But as it stands now, uh, whatever date is expected, our clients and consultants have indicated that we're standing by to understand the dates. I expected that, uh, they would have perhaps two, two alternatives and with one of them, we can certainly make that happen. But if not, we'll have confident test uh, a confident licensed professional to answer any questions based on the plan.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I don't see anyone raising their hand or wanting to ask any questions at this time. So could I have a motion to close the public, please?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Enter and Mertens, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Eileen?
Mr. Junko, August twenty second has two smaller applications on. If you thought you'd be ready for that meeting. September twelve has two applications. One was carried to it. One was scheduled. September nineteenth has one application carried to it or scheduled. I think it was carried, but.
Well, Eileen, thank you. All of those dates can be acceptable. However, uh I expect that I'll have to consult with Mr. Bear about arranging the meeting that he wants to have to determine the affordable housing obligation with the business administrator and the township affordable housing attorney. So I will contact him tomorrow morning to make those arrangements. And it's likely that if he offers one and a half op- options, we'll be able to select one of them. So this should not be difficult, but the timing to gather the material that we want, need to present may take a little longer. So I am expecting I'd like to be able to tell you that not in September twelfth looks like our best state, but why don't if I, I think it would be best if I'm able to consult further with Mr. Bear and he with the with the client, the township officials. And from there.
Excluding any vacation issues, I mean, we could meet relatively shortly. I mean, I'm working the month of August and I'm sure I, and as long as the township officials are, we can meet within the next week or two. I don't see an issue with that.
And if we
Well, I think anytime later this week would be fine, but I'd like a couple of days to review this with my clients. So perhaps everything after Wednesday would be good.
Okay.
But do you want to be carried to a date certain so you don't have to renotice?
What about the first meeting in October?
They would have to renotice then because we'd probably be going back live. So
I think that the the September twelfth day is probably perfectly fine. I think we could probably hash it out between now and then. Unless, unless, John, you you feel differently.
What was the other date? Nineteenth?
September twelfth or nineteenth.
Eileen, they're they're together like that, not like
Because there's a holiday in there, a Jewish holiday or something.
Got it.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I think that it would be, uh, more certain for September nineteenth.
Roger. Eileen?
I would also need an extension of time, Mr. Junko.
All right, I'll deliver that tomorrow, Eileen, but I'll represent on the record tonight that we will extend the time past September nineteenth. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll advise you and the board that if the date's extended beyond that, I will, we will consent to the necessary extensions.
Thank you, Mr. Junko.
Thank you. So September nineteenth.
Listening here for case number BA twenty-one dash twenty-one. Countryside North America Partners LP. This case will be adjourned as of this evening and will be re- re-entered on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two with an extension of time being granted T B date.
Well, at least through the nineteenth, so.
At least through the nineteen.
Oh, we say the thirtieth.
Does that work, Mr. Junko?
Yes.
Okay, well, listen, thank you very much. Uh, for you and your professionals and working with us and, um you know, we're, we're looking forward to, uh what's next?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just confirm that uh, I want, I'm not sure I followed it properly, but are you carrying it without further notice or are you requiring a renotice for this, uh, this September nineteenth hearing?
Eileen?
I believe you're carrying it without further notice because we're giving it a definite date.
That just needs to be expressed.
Without further notice.
I believe the chairman did say that, John, but maybe it's extended to September nineteenth without further notice required.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, good night, everyone. Eileen?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So for the board members and everything, we're we have nothing scheduled in Oc- October is what I think I heard you saying, right?
Correct.
And, um but we're going to go ahead and notice for live in October. So if anything does show up, you'll email us. And we'll, uh, we'll communicate and I hope the text messaging is is a good way to communicate to put everybody and alert everybody.
For me, it is. Yeah, for me, it's great.
Yeah, that worked well.
First.
Good, thank you.
Okay. So, uh, thank you to our professionals. Thank you to our board members. Thank you, Eileen. Um, you know, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Hughes? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Nobody wants to leave.
I was muted, Glenn, so I said it twice and I forgot I unmuted.
All right, listen, good night, everyone. Thanks, Mr. Moretti. Thanks, Mr. Hughes. Thank you, Mr. More. Thank you, Mr. Rebel. Thank you, Mr. Champion.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
We'll try.